How are you?
Good.
I'm Shelley. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Aloha, Kako. Welcome, everyone. I'm Clarissa Burkert. I'm the Chair of the Kuleo O'Kulani Eki Neighborhood Board, and I hope you're all in the right place. We're just so excited to see you here at the Inahaina Library. It's the first real in-person meeting we've had. We tried to meet down at the All-White Ballroom, but it was inconvenient, I think, for people. And so I'm very grateful to Kali Lucas and Hia Lani Sanotapali, who are on our committee to find a better place to meet at. And thankfully, we are all here tonight. This is a joyous moment. Welcome. I'll start with the city and state monthly reports. We're still waiting for a few of our board members to come in.
She's on her way to.
Okay, okay. So let's get started with our emergency responders. Honolulu Fire Department, hi. Who is joining us tonight?
Aloha, board members. My name is Emmett Hall. I'm the fire captain at Wailepe Fire Station.
Hi.
Hi. So the statistics for this past month, we had three activated fire alarms with no fire. We had 36 medical emergencies, six motor vehicle accidents, and one ocean rescue. The fire safety tip for the month involves holiday cooking fires. Thanksgiving is a peak day for cooking fires, and unattended cooking is the number-one contributor to those fires. So just a reminder for everyone to stay in the kitchen and focus on the food you're cooking when cooking on the stove top. Stay in your house when you're cooking your turkey and check on it frequently. And if you want a fried turkey, we recommend you purchase it from a grocery store or a restaurant. Are there any questions for me?
Does anyone have questions for Captain Hall from the Honolulu Fire Department?
No, no one has their hand raised up.
Sir, I don't see anyone with questions.
I have a question.
Oh, okay. We have one question?
Tim Stanton. I live on the Ridge.
Tim Stanton?
And just to let you know, we have the largest plot of land. It's over 18,000 square feet. And as we look down, it's absolutely dry, all the way down on the ridge. We've had gardens. The neighbors had gardens.
I assume so.
And there's a distinct concern that there could be a brush fire up there, a big brush fire. Just to let you know.
Captain, can you hear what he said? Were you able to hear? Or we could have him come up and speak closer into the mic?
No, ma'am. I was unable to hear what was said.
Okay. So we only have the Omni mics, which are up here. So if you could come up to the front row and ask you a question and just talk a little louder, they should be able to get you.
And maybe you can try talking into here.
I know because I speak English, not Portuguese. Good evening, sir. My name is Tim Stanton. I live on Poolea Ridge. And we own the largest plot of land up there. And all the neighbors have equivalent sizes, over 18,000, 19,000 square feet. This year has got even worse. We've conscientiously cut all the brush back, but it goes into an area. We don't know who it's owned by. And it's tinder-dry. And I just thought I'd bring this to your attention because behind us in March, on the other side of the ridge, there was a brush fire and somebody got smoke inhalation. And some of my guys pulled her out of her house. So I just thought I'd like to bring that to your attention before something happens. Thank you.
Sir, were you able to hear him this time?
Yes, ma'am. I was able to hear. And I thank you, sir, for bringing that to our attention.
Do we have any other questions? Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Captain.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we will have the report from Honolulu Police Department.
Good evening. Lieutenant Thompson from District 7 Patrol. For the stats of October, well, three reported motor vehicle thefts, three burglaries. There are four thefts and four unauthorized entry to motor vehicle cases. Total calls for service for the month was 6,380 calls. And for the security tip of the month, these go for businesses. Make sure your property is well-lit. Areas that benefit most from outdoor lighting are those that are most loadable, such as entryways, back alleyways, and windows. Light should be positioned as high as possible to prevent tampering. Motion detectors and floodlights are recommended. Secure all windows and doors. All businesses should have tamper-proof, pick-resistant door locks. Keep areas surrounding doors and windows unobstructive and well-lit. And one other tip that's on our website is that a lot of businesses like to use lock boxes because different employees come and go. The time they close and the time they open. The thieves know that those lock boxes are easily they're easily opened and allows them to gain access into the business. So try not to use those lock boxes. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions for Lieutenant Thompson?
Those statistics east on Lulu, what area?
This neighborhood board specifically.
Okay. We have a question from Kevin Malkern. Kevin, please come to the mic.
Thank you, Lieutenant Thompson, for joining us this evening. I've been trying to follow some of the new gun laws. It seems that a lot of people have applied for concealed carry permits. And I think I read something in the paper a little while ago that the signs on many businesses say "No guns allowed" or "Null and void." So essentially, private citizens can go similar places as you can with guns at the moment. Is that correct?
That's correct. I know for the private businesses, they can make their own rules as far as what they allow inside their own businesses. So if that business does not allow weapons inside, then that's completely up to them.
Okay. What I read in the paper was a little different than that, but that's not really the point that I was trying to make. When you make motor vehicle stops now, if I was a policeman, I'd be very nervous. What do you want the driver to do? In the movies, I see people keeping their hands in playing sight or on the dash. Or I see sometimes people get out of the car. What should a person do when they're stopped by the police? What is the proper procedure?
Stay in the car. By all means, stay in the car. It's safer to be in the car than out on the roadway. Both hands on the steering wheel is also a good thing to practice. And if you are concealed carry, to just inform the officer stopping you that you're concealed carrying and you're carrying a weapon on you at that time.
Thank you. And then what is a driver's rights? Because I sometimes hear of individuals who are pulled over for suspected DUIs and some refuse to take a breath test. I've heard of people not allowing the police officers to search their car. What are the driver's rights when it comes to a police officer stops them?
As far as specifically a person?
Okay, thank you. So specifically, can a police officer search your car without authorization? Open the trunk or look under the seats?
Not without authorization, no.
Okay. And then when people decline a breathalyzer test or a sobriety test, I guess, what happens in those cases? And that's my last question. Thanks for your patience with me.
I can't comment on what would happen in those cases because every case is different in its own. You have the right to refuse, but there's... Yeah, it's really like... It's a resituational thing, so I couldn't comment per se, you know. Yeah.
Very much.
Thank you, Kevin. Are there any other questions for Lieutenant Thompson? Thank you very much, Lieutenant Thompson.
Thank you.
We really appreciate everything that you do, especially during this busy holiday season. Thank you for helping our neighborhood safe. Next, we have our Board of Water Supply Representative, Christopher Sugimoto. Good evening, Christopher.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Sugimoto from the Honolulu Board of Water Supply. Let me share my screen. Okay, so for this month, there's no main breaks to report. The general water announcements. It's 2024 poster and poetry contest. So the Board of Water Supply has launched its 2024 poster and poetry contest. The poster contest is open to kindergarten to six. Poetry contest is open to grade seven to 12. This year's theme is "Our Water, Our Home." The deadline to enter is February 28, 2024. You can find out more information on our website at www boardwatersupply.com/wcwcontest. That's the end of my report. So you don't have any questions or comments for BWS?
Do we have any questions for the Board of Water Supply? I think we're good. Thank you, Christopher.
All right. Mahalo, everyone. Good night.
Good night. We will now move on to board business. First item on the agenda is vacancies. Oh, okay, we don't have form. All right. We will move on to... And so we will pass through regular meeting minutes, awaiting quorum. Treasurers' report. I'm just going to make a comment that requests to use outreach funds to purchase signs to advertise meetings were not approved by the Neighborhood Commission. There are no announcements unless board members are aware of things that we need to let the community know about. Does anyone have announcements? Okay. So this is now our favorite section, which is for you, our community residents. This is the time where we ask for people to bring up their concerns or questions. And so is there anyone who would like to bring up a question? Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Stanton?
Oh, I don't have a... Sorry. My name is Tim Stanton. My wife will be here shortly, Carolyn. We own a comprehensive school of music and the arts, and we're expanding. So we're looking at properties in this area. And we're hopeful that we're going to get a warm reception. Now, at the moment, pre-COVID, we almost crashed. It went down to 150 students. We're up to 380 students. And now we're expanding into Hawaiian arts culture. I lived for 11 years in Papua New Guinea as the Curriculum Development Officer. Carolyn is also recognized internationally as being the sole teacher on the West Coast that supports the raw quality of music standards. So the school and the focus is a little bit different. We don't necessarily teach for competition. It's like playing golf. You compete eventually. So hopefully, next couple of meetings, we'll have more information for you. Some people have jokingly said, and I'm sure you're aware of some of them, that the world is very negative about improvements. So I thought I'd come down and Carolyn would be here to face you and say, "We don't believe that for a moment." So thank you for listening. It's much appreciated.
And we look forward to hearing more about, you know, about your expansion. I've been a student at your school and you have very fine instructors there.
Obviously, a lot of our students come from this side of the island, which is why we're looking at Inahaina.
Do you have a space yet? Do you have a space or location that you're looking at?
Yes.
Okay. Is it in a shopping center? Oh, that's cool.
Yes. Obviously, before we go ahead, I think it's only polite to let the Neighborhood Board know that we're looking here rather than somebody spring it on you and you've got a big surprise. And hopefully, if anybody in the neighborhood has any questions, we can talk about that before.
Good. Do you want to tell us where it is?
Sorry?
Do you want to tell us where it is?
No, no, that is not.
Okay. Just know that we have a very vigilant community. So like, you know, there's places where you can have businesses and places where you can't.
Oh, no, this is...
Okay.
This is recognized promotion.
Okay, okay, great.
It's not... We're not opening up another house and I'm being...
No, yeah, I see. That's the thing.
That's how we start.
That's what people get in trouble here.
So this is time... Oh, go ahead, Musinda.
Is this public input?
We passed public input, but... Oh, yes, go ahead. I was ready to go on to officials' reports. Sorry, my mind already switched. No, please, go ahead.
My name is Emery Kurt. I'm from Maukulu.net. And I'm updating the board on a project that I let your chair know about in April, which is the Na'anaipu'olo project, that you're planning down Kalaniano Lake Highway. So we started our first wall in Inahua. And then we went to Waileki. And then to Kuleo O'Kanui. And then our most current wall is at the beginning of Maunolu, where the great fish pond used to be, Okoea o Maunolu. So I just came in to let the board know because we looked at it as a four- to six-month project. And because it's all volunteer and we work off of donations, so we have one other large wall to go and then smaller walls. So I just wanted to come here and update the board in person. And then, yeah, and we just let you know that that's what's happening and that the response from the community has been really wonderful. And it's a way of connecting all our communities on the east side by honoring our fish ponds, which would be Waileke, Kupapa, Kalahai, Iki, Kanui, and O'Kuleo Maunolu. So I just wanted to update you.
Oh, mahalo, Emery. I'm sorry. I mistook your identity, so I am so sorry.
I didn't recognize you. Nice to see you.
Yeah. Do you need any help from the community?
You know, the community response has been great. So we have a list of volunteers and we have a waitlist of people who'd like their walls done. But we also want to make sure that we don't overdo it. And then we have one of our elected officials, Partner Transportation, just to make sure everything was okay. So we're thankful for the homeowners who have allowed us to do this. So as far as community involvement, we're on a break right now into our next wall. So we have a list. But they can go to maunolu.net and learn about the project. And if they can't volunteer, they might just want to learn about it. And then we're going to have an Na'anaipu'olo celebration to bring all the homeowners and community together so they can understand more of the project. That was a long answer to help people.
It sounds like you have a lot of support, which is great.
Yeah, I think people first didn't know what was going on. And so it's been an opportunity to educate the community and to connect communities. So now the people in Inahua understand the bullet or Na'anaipu'olo that ran in their area came down to O'Kuleo Maunolu and they continued on to Fuku'a as they went on. It's been really great.
It's beautiful work. Thank you.
And our artist, our lead artist that we work with is Rand Novick, and he's from Maunolu. So everyone's pretty much from Maunolu, so it's great.
Mahalo. Are there any other announcements or questions for the board?
Okay. Well, we've actually given an update on Wailepe. Pu'ono O'Wailepe, since nobody from the board is here. But so the Pu'ono O'Wailepe, the burial site of our ibi... where our ibi kupuna are, we just finished our AIS. And it was just submitted to... We paid for our own. It was just submitted to Shipti and accepted. And we're just waiting. There are new sites that were discovered. We're waiting on the number assignments to be given to the new sites, historical sites that were found on the property. And we have the Department of Land Management coming to look at it again. And so we're just still going through the process of the Clean Water Natural Land Fund.
Can you describe to people... So this is Hia Lani Sanotapali, and she's been working on this for a long time. Can you just explain to people where the location of the ibi kupuna are?
Yeah, it's actually right above there. It is on Kiki Lani Street, Kiki Lani Circle. And it is on Hilihili Nui Ridge. So it's not very far from here. You could actually walk there from here. So, yeah, so it's a three-acre parcel, and it's been in the news since 2008. It is a very controversial topic, yeah.
Are there any plans for development of the area? Where does the development stand at?
No, no development. We were working with the landowner. So we have his full support. We do have the support of our awesome council representative, Tommy Waters. And so we're just kind of moving ahead. Any support is great. We did have one hearing already at the Clean... Wait, sorry, I'm on the water issue too. Sometimes I get the one commission mixed up with the other. So we have a... We had a hearing at Dillinar... No, it wasn't at Dillinar, sorry. It was at the Fawsey Building. And it was with the Clean Water and Natural Lands Fund. We did have, unfortunately, one person that opposed the project that came from... I... Oh, gosh, what is that, Community Association? Right over here.
I know, I know.
Yeah. So opposition. I thought that was very shocking.
Opposition to what?
To our project, which our funding... The funding for to preserve the...
It's a conservation easement or something, right? Is that what you guys are hearing about?
Um, yeah, actually, we're not asking for the ownership to come to our nonprofit. We're actually asking for the ownership to go to the county. We're not even going to, you know, like, we're not getting anything out of this. But other than where we... We would be the stewards of the property.
Right, so there's a...
And just manage access for the Iki descendants to the ibi kupuna.
And is there opposition to that?
Yes. One person from Inahaina Community Association.
Yes, Emery?
I just have a question. I just want clarification because is the opposition to the project or is the opposition to the cost? Those questions raised because they assess value of the land? Because I worked with them and I've worked on this project from 2008. I mean, I've been on this project for a long time, so... I'm just curious because the community association has supported it. So I'm curious whether they just oppose to the cost of the land. And that was it because it's not opposing the project. It could be a cost of what land is supposed to cost.
They're opposed to the landowner getting anything over what they think he should get.
So then it's not so much opposing the project and it's opposing... I mean, it's questioning the cost because the city can only pay what they appraise land. So if, say, it's appraised for three and the owner wants eight, the city can't pay that. So I'm just curious if the question raised was not so much opposition to the acquisition of Inahua, but more about the cost of the questions raised there.
Well, the way... Yeah, and I'm just saying that to... When it's listed on the... On how it's listed is that it's opposition. It doesn't say opposition because of the cost. It just... It'll be checked off as opposition. And that's how it was written. "I oppose the funding." And that, it doesn't matter, like, it's just... That's just how it is. But the appraised value right now by the county tax office is $9 million. He's willing to go down. And he has expressed that. He is the landowner, and this is the way I perceive this whole thing. The landowner and ourselves, Kanaka Mauli, who are have, you know, our president is a Iki descendant of that, of the bones, are the victims here. Because that property should have never been sold to a developer. They should have never given the permits. So, you know, and then the landowner just lost everything in the line of fires. So he lost his one last, I guess, one major business there, which is kind of tragic. So, yeah, I mean, at a human level, it's like... For us, there's no cost to ibi kupuna. I don't really care. Like, and it's our money. And they have $48 million in that fund, and they haven't used any of it yet.
Right, but I'm just going to jump in that. I don't know if the county appraised it at $9 million or the landowner because we've been actually waiting to see what the official appraisal was because that's the landowner's appraisal, but it's not the city and county's appraisal.
No, it is the city and county.
When did that appraisal come out?
It just went up his land tax.
No, no, no. The county has to appraise the land before they can purchase it.
Oh, no, yeah, 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 yeah.
So the Clean Water Natural Land hasn't done that appraisal yet.
No.
Yeah, so that's the appraisal that will decide how much you...
And that's the hard part is...
So that's a difference.
Because the way the process is, they won't do the appraisal to the end. So, and so what we're going off is the county-appraised value. And that is $9 million.
Well, it's $9 million based on the fact that there is going to be development on the land. The land itself is one price going to put development right on. Then that makes prices go up. So that's where it kind of gets weird.
It just went up $2 million from last year, so...
The development parts, but not the land, so...
No, the actual appraisal went up. So I've been... I saw the appraisal from 2022. It was $7 million. And then I saw the appraisal this year. He's paying now nine taxes on $9 million. So I don't know how it went up $2 million.
Right, but that's on the...
That's the county.
If it's not on the appraised land, it's on the development, I think, on the area. That's why I've been on this for a long time, so I know your position. And we kind of meet.
Yeah, so I don't know what development that's not there happened that was $2 million worth between 2022 and 2023. So $2 million, where did that come from? And that's the county for you.
They can charge more taxes.
Yeah. But it doesn't matter. I mean, you know, they should have come and talked to us. When settlers come in and say things that Hawaiians shouldn't have rights to these, to our own ibi kupuna, that's a problem.
Thank you both. So we need to move on to officials' reports. We can take this offline. But I think there's still things going on and it's good to get more clarification.
Well, yeah, I just wanted to give the update.
Yeah.
But he is willing to go down. He said like $2, $5 million or something.
Okay.
So we're still negotiating on that.
Okay. So we will now take reports from our elected officials. First is the... Okay, so we will now take reports from our elected officials, first is the mayor's representative, John Uchi, hey, John, I see you're with us tonight, hello.
Aloha Chair, I hear a different energy in your voice tonight, I think it must be the, the neighborhood board finding its new home for now, which is kind of a homecoming of sorts, because when I first started attending this meeting, it was at the Aina Haina Library, so nice to see the digs and I hope to join you guys in person very shortly, very soon.
That would be great, John.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just glad that, you know, there's a home for this neighborhood board now, for this month, I, I have a couple of updates, mayor's office would like to remind everyone that the mayor's monthly newsletter can be found online at www.wonowaho.org/newsletter, it highlights a lot of accomplishments from the different city and administrative departments. On behalf of the Neighborhood Commission Office, the NCO is hiring neighborhood board assistants to engage in public awareness for community support, neighborhood assistants help coordinate with neighborhood board chairs, just like you, and produce written reports to members of the public, people may send resumes for consideration to nco@honolulu.gov or call the Neighborhood Commission Office at 808-768-3710, that's all I have for this evening, but I will be standing by to take any notes and questions or concerns back to the administration.
Thank you, John, yes, we do need more neighborhood assistance, we need, we need good neighborhood assistance, which we, we've been lucky to have, we have the super neighborhood assistant with us tonight, Jackson, we are so lucky, does anyone have questions for the mayor? Yes, there is a question from Kevin Malkern, please come to the mic, Kevin.
Hi, John, thank you so much for attending all the meetings, it, it's nice to have the, the mayor represented and
Yeah, good, I earned my strawberries.
Thank you, and, and you're gonna get more strawberries, okay, but from what I understand, some of the people do like the onions for cooking, so we might give you a choice, okay, but, but, thank you for accepting them, that, that was good fun, and Anne Marie Kirk might be able to help me with the, the appropriate names, but I, I do a lot of fishing off of Piko and I see all the work that Chris Kramer is doing at two locations on the highway and he has great volunteers, he has a little difficulty removing refuse at times, I, I helped him with my truck, we hauled away green waste, we hauled away what, what I call people trash, you know, cardboard cans and other things, and then he had recyclables, to me, it would be a nice way to say thank you to the volunteers by providing them with some of those containers that the garbage truck kind of picks up, it would also be safer for him and his group to put those out a couple of times a week for the regular refuse pickup, do you think there's a possibility that the mayor might be able to say thank you to their, those volunteers by providing them some garbage cans?
I'm not familiar with the, the location and, and the work you're referring to.
Anne, there, there's, there's two fish ponds, you know, I guess one closer to Niu Valley and then one more further down, but, yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, and, and we, I could get you the addresses, that, I'm not good at the Hawaiian names, but I could find the addresses, but there are two community service projects and generally when people do community service projects, the city kind of chips in with gloves or bags or other things, but having some refuse, you know, some containers that could be used on a regular basis would be invaluable to the volunteers.
Can definitely ask and I'll put that question forward.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin, we have a question from, oh, go ahead.
I can, I can give the addresses for the properties, thank you so much, Kevin.
Thank you.
Eight, five, nine, seven, five, Kalani'a Ole, and Oh, Janine, help me, Janine, help me with the other one.
Hi, the reason why that there's trouble removing trash is because that property is owned by the Department of Land and Natural Resources, the state, and the city does not allow them to have any trash containers, so it's a problem because of the state, if we could get some trash containers, that would be wonderful, but they refuse to give it because apparently there's no, the state doesn't pay taxes on any of their properties, so they aren't allowed to have trash pickup, and that's why we have to, we have trouble getting rid of trash at that property.
So here's
Because we, we can't, we can't get any trash containers, I know that already, I've tried.
Well, let's see what, let's see what the mayor can do, I'm willing to give him the benefit of the doubt, let's, let's see him do it.
Was there a second address though that you
Oh, the second address, Janine?
For which place?
Uh, Kalau Hae Hae, I gave the one for Kone Wai.
Sorry, I'll put it in the chat, I don't have it offhand.
Okay, thank you, Janine, you had a, a separate question, right? No? Okay, thank you, so, do we, any question, other questions for the mayor, for John? Okay, not seeing any, we thank you, John, and look forward to, to seeing your happy face at our next meeting.
Thanks, I will see you soon and I'll be standing by.
Okay, so, it's Dave Day's next, it's Dave Day's turn, he's representing Governor Josh Green, hi, Dave.
Hi, can you see me and hear me?
Definitely.
Okay, good thing that today's the first day that I'm appearing via video, because I was definitely going to Alawai if I had not, so I'm, I'm very glad that today was the day, but just, I, I, one thing I'd like to mention, I know that the members of our board have always taken a keen interest in Red Hill, and so I wanted to share an update on Red Hill, as, as you know, the, the Department of Health along governor's office and other parties have been working with the Navy and now the fueling has begun, and so I just wanted to provide stats, as of November first, the Joint Task Force for Red Hill has, has removed to date fifty-four million, two hundred thousand, oh no, pardon me, yeah, fifty-four million, two hundred thousand, seven hundred forty-four gallons of fuel from the Red Hill Bulk Fuel Storage Facility, we are on track, or they are on track to complete the gravity defueling of approximately one hundred and four million gallons by the middle of July, or pardon me, the middle of January, twenty twenty-four, I also wanted to, if, just wanted to provide a really great site that provides kind of almost daily updates on this, it's www.pacom.mil/jtf-red-hill, and if I could figure out how to use this app, I'll put that into the, into the chat afterwards, but it's basically, it provides daily updates on fuel removed from Red Hill, and it also has other information about, you know, what the, perfect, yeah, that's exactly right, other updates regarding, you know, what the process is, the safety, the safety protocols in place, I didn't have any questions from last week, so I'm open to any questions this week.
Questions for, for Dave, for Governor Josh Green? Coming up, we have a question from Mr. Stanton.
Good evening, we understand the issues with the actual physical quantity of liquid, but what happens to the tanks and the residue that's left behind, because is there a program to disassemble the tanks and remove them, because if there is, what is happening to the sludge? Thank you.
Thank you for your question, I, I don't know that off the, off the top of my head, but I will follow up about the next steps regarding Red Hill after the fueling, I believe that, you know, there are plans in place and probably decisions that will be made, but I will follow up for the next meeting.
I, I can answer a little bit of that, so the gravity defueling will end by January twenty twenty-four, and then between January and the end of March, so, and what, after they do the gravity defueling, there'll be sixty-four thousand gallons left, that's, and that's what cannot come through the pipes, because it's underneath the pipes, and so that's gonna take up to March to remove the sixty thousand gallons, then there'll be four thousand gallons of sludge, that will take up until December, and that's what I'm hearing from the Joint Task Force of twenty twenty-four, that's gonna have to be hand removed, because there's no way they can take that out, I mean, other than they're gonna have to just, yeah, and then there was a, there was a survey that was put out on what, how do we use the tanks, and, you know, we're being told that the facility will be shut down, so the sixty-four thousand of gallons will be defue during the closure of the facility, so, so there's the defueling, which is the gravity defueling, and then there's the closure, which will take everything else out, but there's also PIFAs still in there, there's still nine hundred gallons of A triple F, which is, you know, the forever, which has the forever chemicals being stored up there, at least, and we don't know what else is in there, so there's a lot of unanswered questions when it comes to Red Hill, but thank you for your concern and the questions, keep asking the questions about Red Hill.
Where I lived before, but a similar situation on a much smaller scale, and the big question was, what are we leaving for future generations to cope with?
Yeah.
That was the basis of the question.
So over the lifespan of the tanks, it spilled at least a hundred eighty thousand gallons of fuel, when it first opened, it was about four, there was a huge spill, about four hundred thousand gallons, that when it first opened, that was, but it was a secret facility, so of course no one knew, and, so, yeah, that's the, the thing, yeah, and so my question to the governor, Dave, Dave, is, is there any, anything he can do about our water bill going up? It's gonna go up fifty percent in five years, so, and that is all because of what the Red Hill issue, they're gonna have to build multiple monitoring wells and, as well as look for, you know, and I guess dig for more, you know, wells to replace the three that were, or the ones that were closed, Waiala Well is the well that is now being, like, providing a huge percentage of our water for, I believe it's four hundred thousand people, residents in Oahu, from Halava to Honolulu, so we had the presentation from the Board of Water Supply, was it, it wasn't last time, right, it was the, you know, two, two meetings ago, and in the presentation, we were told to expect our water bill to go up, and it is a direct result of the Red Hill spill, the Department of Defense is, is actually the ones that should flip the bill
Yes.
For the water, the new monitoring wells and the additional wells, they're gonna have to dig, so if you can take that back, how is the governor, can the governor help us in getting answers to this, because we, what we need is for the Department of Defense to take responsibility for the increase, also, I have another question for the governor, you know, the, we're trying to get answers, the last couple of meetings I've been to, the Department of Health has not been there, and we need answers regarding the no detection test, I know that there were families that were reporting increased contamination in their water, and it could be because their house pipes are, and these are people on the Navy water distribution system, it could be because their, their pipes are PCP, right? What is that, PVC, PVC, they're plastic, and so because they're plastic, some of the contamination is still stuck in there, they have water heaters that were never replaced, so that's another issue, and then this jelly that's coming out of their water heater, heaters, so there's a lot of stuff that still needs to be addressed, but when they had reported to the Department of Health, and this is since
Sorry, can I get a clarification, who's they?
They are about two dozen families that live on the Navy water distribution system, some in the Navy housing on the Pearl City Peninsula, some on Hickam Air Base, some in Kapilina, so in different areas, they have been reporting, they've been calling that, that hotline, you know, the Navy, I think it's a DOC, sorry, there's so many abbreviations, anyway, there's a Navy line you can call to get tested, there's an EPA line you can call to get tested, and there's a Department of Health line that you can call to get tested, and so there's been testing being done, the Department of Health in their press release said they went out and tested some homes and there was no detection, quote unquote, what we're finding out is that when they say no detection, it's actually not no detection, it's actually below the amount that's allowable, or, you know, they, they could find trace amounts, but it would be, if it's below what the, sorry, allowable levels are, then it's, it's considered no, and we need clarification on that, we need clarification on what no detection means to the Department of Health, and I know that they're understaffed, that's another issue that I think needs to be addressed, if you can bring that up to the governor, because they're overwhelmed with what's going on in Lahaina, and then they have to deal with Red Hill, we found out from another source that there was a spill of one gallon, but it was only addressed when it was leaked out, so, you know, that's, you know, at this point, we need as much information as we can get, but yeah, so the Department of Health needs to clarify what the heck does no detection mean when they say that, and they also need to, if the governor can check up on the water bill, if he can advocate for us and get the Department of Defense to pay for the, the water bill.
Thank you, Healani, the other question relating to testing, I would like to know is what is being tested for, thank you, okay, appreciate all your help, Dave, and do we have another question?
I'm sorry.
Who is? Oh, all right, go ahead, Kevin.
This is a continuation of the question I had asked the, the mayor's office, you know, regarding the trash cans at the two facilities, do you think there's a possibility that possibly the, the governor could talk to the mayor and we could get some refuse containers for those two locations, there, I think they're walking distance from your home and there are school groups, there's neighbors, there's community, and, and there's a lot of volunteers that work there, it'd be a nice way to say thank you.
So Kevin, could you please clarify again the location of, of this?
It, it, it's in the chat, not that I know what a chat is, but there, there are two locations on Kalani'a Nui Highway, and, and both of them are freshwater springs, and there, there have been, there, there's just been thousands of community service And there, there have been, there, there's just been thousands of community service hours spent on them. One of the locations, and if you all would help me, the location that's closer to Neo Valley, that's right next to the ocean or Paico Beach. Yeah, right. That, that one actually has about five or six large coconut trees that are fully loaded on state property. And although Chris Kramer's group, and he's been coordinating a lot of the work, they've been trimming the coconut trees within the parcel of land that they're caring for. But there are several large coconut trees outside their property, but on state, on the state beach. And they're, they're to me a real hazard when you have kids and volunteers or just the, the general public on the beach. The trees are probably, I, I'm gonna guess forty feet tall. And they're loaded with coconuts. The coconuts fall. They need to be attended to, otherwise someone's gonna get killed, and it would be terrible to thank a volunteer by, you know, give, giving their body back to their parents after a coconut kills them.
So this, uh, this is on the Makai side of Kalani on Ioli?
It's on the beach side. Yeah, ocean side.
Okay. And so, so I, I, so just so I can get clarification, I know there was discussion about these, about the trash cans. And so this is, there's the coconut issue and the trash can issue? Are those the same?
Yeah, um, no, so two, two separate. So, so what involves you, you're, the ma, the mayor talking to the governor? So, so that the, the groups can have some refuse containers. The other issue has to do with the governor taking responsibility for some large hazardous coconut trees on state property and having them pruned on a regular basis so that, that the nuts do not kill beachgoers or the volunteers at, at the, at one of the spring, at one of the locations.
Okay, so I see this. So I see in the chat, I'm looking at it now. There's the locations, and those are for the coconut trees. And then with respect to the organizations that need trash cans, could you just give me a little bit more detail about that so I can follow up?
It, it'll, it'll be in the chat. I'm not good at Hawaiian names. I get in trouble when I try to pronounce them.
Can, can you see it?
Yeah, I'm looking at the chat now.
Okay, thank you. So I, I think I'm off the hook then, as far as addresses and, and native pronunciations. Thank you.
Do you see what you were looking for, Dave?
I see a lot of addresses, um, and I see, I'm just not sure which ones are coconuts and which ones are trash cans. But maybe in the chat, somebody could write that in to clarify, because I'm happy to follow up on this. I just want to make sure that I'm asking the right questions.
Yes, so both, both are trash cans. Only one has beach drainage that needs the coconut address.
Okay, thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Dave, and I look forward to seeing you at our next meeting. So remember, Inahaina, there's plenty of places to pick up food around here, too.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, for sure. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Thanks again, and we'll see you next month. Look forward to, to the feedback that you get from the ma, from, from the governor. Okay, Adam, it's, it's your turn. So I'd like to introduce Adam Do, who's representing City Council Chair Tommy Waters.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board. There was some concerns at our last meeting on speeding on Kalani on Ioli Highway, specifically near Kalani High School. So we did pass that on to HBD. They did conduct
Adam, come closer to the mic.
Yeah. They did conduct some speed enforcement of between October seventeenth and October twenty fourth. During this time, officers on the night watch issued one citation for a red light violation and two citations for speeding, and also made one arrest, one arrest for excessive speeding. For Kuleo Canal, specifically on the Malka side of the highway. Couple weeks ago, many residents in that area contacted our office about the stagnant water in the canal. It's not moving, um, and there, algae bloom has been created and this very strong smell. A foul odor, and some residents even have reported even feeling a little nauseous and sick from it. So the Department of Facility Maintenance, the F M, successfully breached the sandbar by the manly, manually
It was smelly.
Opened the stream mouth for three days last week, from October twenty third to the twenty fifth. That allowed the stream level to be lowered six to eight inches. The Storm Dream crew with the vacuum truck also was dispatched to clean the L.A. Lupe Dream Ditch area on October twenty eighth. And a crew was also sent out again yesterday to reopen the sandbar area. So unfortunately, what really needs to happen is a really heavy rainfall to come in and clear out the water. We haven't had much rain recently. So hopefully we get a good rainfall coming soon. Our office is following this matter very closely. And we've been in direct, almost daily communications with the residents in that area. And then lastly, uh, I did want to give a quick update that the Department of Planning and Permitting gave to the Planning and Economy Committee regarding the building permit backlog. You can find this presentation on Chair Waters' newsletter. I believe we emailed that out to you, but you can also find it on Chair Waters' newsletter, newsletter that is posted on the City Council website. The residential permit duration has been reduced from three hundred and thirty, thirty days to a hundred eighty one days during the last year, and pre-screening improved from six months to five days. DPP Director Ofino said she is working hard with the departments to bring these numbers down. DPP has hired seventy six new employees and has lost forty one members due to retirement and other separations. DPP created fifteen plant examiner, examining engineer positions, and they believe that hiring these positions will reduce the building permit backlog. And with that, excuse me, I'm happy to bring back any questions. Yes?
I have a question. There was a thread on Nextdoor, and it was Representative Ward saying that, um, council members put a post on there, so they had to do it before. What is that?
So it's a Nextdoor policy, I believe, that they don't let city officials post on it. So, yeah, so we shared the information with Representative, Representative Ward's office.
Thank you. Question from Kevin Mulker.
I wanted to thank your office for your help with the building department. I think the numbers you had mentioned were averages. We, we are moving forward, which is good, but it's still not there. And then, I, I don't know, I, you probably don't realize how much I appreciate you sharing the police statistics about citations for red lights or citations for speeding or unruly individuals. When the police give their reports, they talk about responding to six thousand calls a month. You, you've actually told us what they're doing, but I, it would be nice if we, we heard more of their successes rather than the crime happening. The bathroom has water, so you want to see some water. It looks like you're under stress. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you so much, Adam. I don't see any questions. Oh, wait. Janine, do I see your handout?
I, yes, I just wanted to say I applied for a permit in August of last year, and I still don't have it. So your statistics obviously don't include me.
Yeah, we understand. Um, I'm sure you're familiar with other members in our office who previously sat on this board. They've experienced very long backlogs as well, or long delays. So we certainly understand the problem is not fixed, um, but Director Noe is trying her hardest to produce that.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Teresa Ing for Senator Stanley Chang.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. So I just put a number of links in the chat. The first one is a link to Senator Chang's November newsletter, which you can find on his website at senatorschang.com. Second, Senator Chang is hosting a housing conference on November fifteenth from nine AM to two PM. It's over Zoom, and you can register with the link in the chat. And a panel of speakers have been invited to discuss the rise of social housing in America. So that'll be really interesting. You can also sign up for Senator Chang's housing newsletter, the link in the chat. Additionally, the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs is warning of deceptive solicitations being sent to registered Hawaii businesses. And the pink solicitations give instructions on how to receive their official certificate of status from an entity called G A Business Compliance. And these solicitations are not official documents issued to businesses by the state. So if you see it in your mail, please throw it away. And if you also own a business, you can monitor your own business information at hbe.ehawaii.gov forward slash documents, forward slash search dot h t m. And then if you aren't sure about any legitimacy of the mail that you receive and you own a business, you can contact the Business Registration Division at DCCA at eight zero eight five eight six two seven two seven. Or you can email them at reg, B R E G at DCCA dot Hawaii dot gov with any questions. And then finally, our office is hiring for the twenty twenty four legislative session. And if you or anyone that you know is interested, they can go to the Capitol website and apply there. The Capitol website is capital.hawaii.gov. And I can take any questions. Back to Senator Chang.
Are there any questions for Senator Chang?
Is there like an update on the working group he sits on for the governor's proclamation on affordable housing?
Um, so the working group has been, I think they haven't set a new date for the meeting since, um, former Chief Housing Officer Nani Maderos resigned, to my knowledge.
Is there a new, um, new person that took her place?
So before she was the lead housing officer, and now that position has been replaced with the Housing Committee, I believe. And the three com, three members that make up that committee is Director Kuma Safi from Hawaii Public Housing Authority, Director Dean Minakami, who was the interim director for Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation, and Mary Alice Evans, who is the Director of Office of, um, OPSD.
What is OPSD?
I know, it's, it's, sorry. She's, one second. Or, yeah, Office of Planning and Sustainable Development.
That's interesting.
Thank you, Teresa. Are there any questions for, for Senator Chang? Any other questions? Thank you very much, Teresa. May you have a nice evening and maybe see you here at Inahaina Library next month.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Representative Mark Casham. Okay, he is, no, he's not online. Okay. Casey Abe. Hi.
Hi. Good evening, Chair, good evening, board members. Casey Abe from the State DOT Highway Division. I don't have anything to report this month because there are no comments or concerns from last month. So if there's any new comments or concerns for the state highways, I can take them right now.
Are there any questions for Hawaii Department of Transportation? It's quiet over here, Casey. I don't see any. You are off the hook until next When are you gonna come to our meeting? We like seeing you.
All right. I thought I would turn on my video so you folks can see me. That's why I don't have to go.
I like your background. It's very relaxing. Well, we appreciate you joining us however you can.
Okay, thank you.
All right, just in time. Listen, yes, yes, I'd like to introduce Lucinda Piles. She's going to update us on the East Honolulu Sustainable Communities Plan and the, speaking for the Kahala community.
Brian Wong, who is on the Kahala neighborhood board.
Hi, nice to meet you, Brian.
Brian's kind of a co-advocate of what we're trying to do. Could the update is, is the
You can come closer to the mic. Would you like to sit down?
Sure.
Okay.
Is the, um, the primary urban center development plan under review went to the Planning Commission yesterday. And, um, I just took a brief look at what is the updated plan. And sadly, all of our recommendations to try to, um, make Wailea Kahala count. For those of you who don't know, the, um, the Wailea Kahala community is split down the middle by the boundary between East Honolulu and the primary urban center. The Ridge, Kahala Nui, the Golf Course, the Hotel, all of that is in East Honolulu, while the Mall Kahala and East Diamond Head are in the PUC. So we, our neighborhood board advocated that the boundary be moved so that the whole of Wailea Kahala be included in the East Honolulu, which we felt, um, for a ton of reasons, or is a better match from the environmental standpoint, from socially, economically, on and on. And we felt that the general plan was in error in the first place to put the boundary where they did. Because criteria for which plan you're in is, do you anticipate to absorb the majority of population growth between now and twenty fifty, which Kahala did not, does not? And whether or not, what are the linkages and relationships? It's what it's referred to. And, um, there's the Hawaiian system of the Ahu Hua, which basically looks at linkages within the boundaries. And those linkages have to do with social, economic, environmental, cultural, so forth. So when you look at that, I think we in Kahala have always kind of thought of ourselves as being part of East Honolulu. I met with Walter Tamas, the Bishop of State Commercial Land Manager Director. And when I talked to him about it, he said, that's really interesting because I've always thought of Kahala as being East Honolulu. And so I think that is a shared idea. But anyway, so fast forward, the process involves three plans, the general plan, the primary urban center development plan, and the East Honolulu plan. The last plan in this cycle is the Urban Core Plan. So we met with Councilmember Banham, who was supportive of what we're trying to do. But in the end, we're too far down the process to do anything about it now. Perhaps had we been able to get a little more underway earlier in the year, it might have been. But for one reason or another, it was delayed. And so nothing's gonna happen now. And the next general plan is not probably for another eight or nine years. So I'm not gonna be around for it. What we'd like to do is still meet with Don Takafuchi Apuna, the Director of Planning and Permitting, to say if we've got this ball rolling and if we have merit, then can this somehow be forwarded in the file? So when this discussion comes up for the general plan, it can be revisited. And it isn't like starting from scratch because we spent a lot of time, you know, studying these plans, looking at statistics, da-da-da. So that's kind of where we're at. I guess nothing is going to happen. I don't know how many of you have read some of the things that we passed on and whether you feel that there's merit to our feeling like we belong with your group. You know, I just, I keep thinking about just the gateway that Kahala is to the Kalani Anioli Highway. And what you do impacts those people trying to get home to Kahala. And what we do impacts you trying to get out of East Honolulu. So just the transit corridor issue in itself is huge in terms of being coordinated and under one plan. We share the stewardship of Wanalua Bay. We've got two streams that empty into the bay. So we have a vested interest. The PUC plan shows no view plane from Kahala. No significant view. And, you know, if you come out that Diamond Head Tunnel, the tour buses stop, it's that view across the bay. If you come home over H1, when you get up there to the top of the hill and you can see Go Ahead in the Bay, sometimes you see the moonrise come up. Really, these are important views. They aren't even included in that plan. So for on and on and on, I could go. But anyway, we would hope, you're all younger than I am, that, you know, if you're still involved in eight or nine years, you would join in trying to see what could be done. And I appreciate that right now was not a good time because you and Neighborhood Board Three have put so much effort into just bringing the East Honolulu Plan up to date that to reopen that would have been less than desirable at this time, just on that alone. But anyway, so I know where we're at. Any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Sure.
So what's the primary concern that Kahala will become another Almoana? Is that what you're trying to prevent?
You know, it's so hard to tell because I met with the land manager. The Bishop Estate has a master lease on Kahala Mall that's not up for 17 years. He said they have no plans at this time. It's Zone B2, which is just regional business, the same as all your shopping centers out here in East Honolulu. So to change that to for any height or any mixed use would require zoning change, which again would be a whole public hearing process. What's encouraging is, you know, they pretty much just redeveloped all the Malka side of Wailea. They could have gone in for a mixed use for higher, but they didn't. And Kahala Nui originally wanted more density. And due to traffic and view planes and all of that, it was downsized. And there was another, I can't think of the name of it, where the old drive-in theater used to be, wanted to be a higher density, and that also was downsized. And its ingress egress was made off of Wailea Avenue. So I think precedent had said that there seems to be, in the powers that be, some of the concerns we have for raising the density. Someone like Brian, who is in a whole neighborhood, that cannot leave without going through Kahala. There are view planes, there are traffic, all their, you know, shopping, everything is there. And yet they're in a separate, you know, area. So when I read your plan and it says, you know, the vision is expecting moderate or mild increase in population, the things you say about sustainability of the bay, the watershed, all of these things. If we were to write it, we would be right, we would be saying the same thing. We get totally lost in the PUC development plan. There are so many, I want to say niches. And in a sense, they're almost not relational. It's like there's near town, midtown, this, that, something else, something else, and there are little dots of color. But, you know, again, the relational, the relation that they have to each other or to a community seems to be missing. They're just dots of color. And that's kind of worrisome. I mean, it's so simple. Our demographics are almost identical to yours. You know, I pulled all this stuff up and I'm going, you know, whether it's race, age, education, on and on, income, all of these demographics, we are, you know, kind of mirror each other. And again, those are the very things that all of these plans talk about are the importance of relationships and linkages. And again, economic, social, and so forth. And yet it totally ignores what our relationships and linkages are. I mean, I, my three sons played every soccer, every basketball, every game in East Honolulu. And frankly, East Honolulu's City and County Parks Division has all of Kahala's parks in it. You know, when the mayor had his town hall, it was Kahala to Hawaii Kai. So it's almost like there's this real world understanding that we're part of East Honolulu. And then this development plan boundary seems to be out of sync. Too much, I could go on and on.
Yes, okay. We have a question from Sherri Spangler.
Okay.
Go ahead, Sherri.
It's not really a question. It's kind of a statement as to help people understand better. Just to say once again that I, Lucinda Piles is one of my heroes through all the years. She is just a fearless fighter for many things that I agree with. But on this, I don't agree. So I'm sorry that I had to disagree. But what people have to understand is that there is a 17-year lease in Kahala Mall. They say they don't have any plans right now, but they've got 17 years to think about what they want to do there. And yes, they might want to go bigger. I know that I myself found out many years ago about how they wanted to double deck all the rest of Kahala Mall that had the trees and the ground parking. They wanted to double deck. I brought that to the Kahala Neighborhood Board and we fought it and we killed it. I was part of a group that fought Nahona Kahala so that they wouldn't have the ingress and egress. We fought it and then we got it to be the egress/ingress interior. We also fought Kahala Nui because it was over dense, it was too high, it was right on the road. We fought all this stuff. And this was on Bishop Estate land. So, yeah, I have a long experience with KSBE, you know, Kamehameha Schools Bishop Estate. And they are the silent elephant in the room as to what their intentions are. And they can tell you very easily right now, oh, they don't have any plans at the moment. But they've got 17 years to play with those plans and those ideas. And, you know, like I refresh everyone's memory, they fought for a typo of 150 feet down at Kahala Beach Apartments, where legally, no one down there could go higher than palm trees. But they had a typo on the land use designation maps. And it had been there for quite a while and no one noticed until I did and brought it up to Barb Maramoto, Representative Barb Maramoto. And they fought for it and said they were vested. And granted, that's not necessarily, it only shows their intention to what they like to do. They wanted to go 150 feet down there at the beach. It doesn't matter what district they're in. It shows their intent and their desires. So we just have to be very wary because East Honolulu, the reason they're called a Sustainable Communities Plan, and I was told this in the 90s, is because we don't have any planned growth, not in building or in population. And we, as a community, in one, you know, objective is to fight development. And that's what we have all done for quite all these decades, I since 1989. So our whole point is to fight development. And sadly, the Kahala Business District can yet go many different areas. There are many, that whole area is B2. You know, the gas station, Saggio's. Granted, they didn't do it at Kahala Market, but they had, maybe they're going to save their fight for another day. Anyway, that's what I wanted to say. And my hats off to you, Lucinda, for all the hard work you've done on so many other things. But on this, I'm sorry I couldn't agree. And thank you very much.
I might just make the comment that we're B2, but so is much of Kahala at Hawaii Kai. And actually, Hawaii Kai has considerably more high buildings, dense growth than we do. And the development plan does include infill and moderate development, the sustainable. It isn't zero development. It isn't zero population growth. And I don't think, you know, the city is looking at Kahala to have maximum population growth. I think there are other issues in addition to that. Like I said, the transit, the environmental issues, there are many issues. But Bishop Estate owns lots of commercial land throughout, as you know, East Honolulu. They're the elephant in the room for the entire, into the island. So I think everyone, you know, has potential for them to look at development. But I think what Sherri just said is that the community has prevailed. And that's the process, is that you come out and you give your reasons, you have your facts, and you do prevail. It isn't like it's hopeless, whether it's Bishop Estate or whoever. So, you know, I think that's, that is, I have a good friend who is Hawaiian. He's been really involved in a lot of things that I asked him about the Ahu'aha. And he said, one thing Hawaiians have always been is they accept change. They are, they, they, I don't know, say they, I guess it just his comment was, they accept change. And so, you know, our world isn't going to stay in every way. It can't with population going the way it is. And so I think that's why these plans are important, is you look at what people value at the time. And, you know, we all want our children and our grandchildren to be able to live here. And to me, old is what's affordable. I look in Kahala, the people, the kids that are buying are buying the oldest, most rundown houses. So, you know, I think that will always be important, that we maintain what's there because that's where you get your foot in the door. But I appreciate Sherri. Sherri's also been part of the community and fighting for good things.
We have one more, one more question or comment for you from Janine Johnson.
Oh, okay.
Janine, go ahead. Thank you for being patient.
Hi. I would also echo what Sherri said about Lucinda. She has been a very great force for her community. I too, on this one issue, oppose combining our neighborhood boards, you know, for all the reasons that Sherri stated. But also too, have you ever looked at combining with Kaimaki? It seems like Kaimaki also has a lot of your same, you know, things and you're right next to each other. And it seemed like it would be a better fit versus, you know, along with, you know, our long span of efforts that we've been doing. I mean, I've been on the neighborhood board for almost 15 years. And for that entire time, we were doing the planning. And we just finally got that done. And to hear you say you want to be part of it and want to open it up, and we're like, oh, no. We just finished it. It was, you know, it's like getting your house done. And then all of a sudden, you know, your roof caves in or something, you got to go through it again. I mean, we don't want that right now. And I think maybe if you, have you looked at combining with Kaimaki and seeing if there's a way to combine those, your two neighborhood boards and area?
Okay, I beat you. I've been off and on the neighborhood board since the 90s, almost 30 years. I was involved in the ever, the review coming up to the 2000 review. And actually, that was when this first came up. But I also served on the mayor's vision teams, which combined Kahala and Kaimaki. And we had pretty much zero in common. We came up with no common visions. The neighborhood boards, the team, I mean, everybody was cordial, but it's clear that it's a very different neighborhood. And for example, we are a mountain, valley, coastline residential community. Our coastline exposure brings out a whole slew of things that Kaimaki does not deal with. And you do. We have streams. We have the watershed issues that Kaimaki does not. We have our commercial land has been developed, master planned, as has our community by Bishop Estate, a single land owner. And it is to this day controlled and guided by that. Kaimaki is a patchwork of individual, small mom and pops. Very different development, very different development history. And a different situation right now is to who, what, where. Has very different demographics than we do. My kids grew up, never, ever did we play a single game, any kind of game, in Kaimaki. Our high school, our kids go to Kalani High School. So it's part of our school district. And if they go to junior high, they go right on the border of Kahala there, is it Washington? I mean, there's just so many things that connect us. We shop at, you know, Costco, Hawaii Kai. We tell, we've got the recent urgent cares. We'd always go to Hawaii Kai for the urgent care, to Queens for mammograms. We are so connected and so familiar. The H1 viaduct, when they put H1 and cut Wailea Avenue in half, they basically physically severed us from Kaimaki in addition to all the other reasons that we are not, not as good a fit.
Well, Lucinda, thank you for all you've done. And I hope that you have, there was a young man who was Christian. Yes, that he will carry some of the knowledge and the work that you've done and carry it on to when this is going to be reconsidered again. But, you know, we've learned a lot from you and thank you.
Well, thank you.
We'll always think of you as our neighbor.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to keep you informed.
It's now time for our closing announcements. So again, thank you to everyone for being here. And please encourage, encourage your neighbors to also come to our new place. And we'd love to see whole people, not just little snippets on the monitor. We get a lot, we have a lot more fun and get more done and have more energy when we actually have people to talk to. So we're going to have our next meeting on December 7th. It'll be our last meeting for the year. It'll be here at 6:30 again. And please bring your ideas. And I look forward to hearing updates from the Stantons in the future. So I wish you all a very wonderful Thanksgiving and thank you very much for all the work you do. Yes, sir?
Am I allowed to make one quick announcement?
Of course.
Where we have our school in Manoa Shopping Center, I run a supper club.
Oh, yeah.
And we're opening it after three years, twelve years of renovation. We're opening it again next weekend. So should I say, anybody here comes in, you get a free glass of wine. No, but anyway, very good.
Are you going to have a Christmas, a special Christmas concert by the kids?
Shari Lynn. She's very wonderful. She teaches for us and she taught at Lafayette. So I'm the chef, so I cook. I haven't poisoned anybody.
No, 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 it's wonderful. No, 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 it's wonderful.
Yeah, yeah.
Next week Saturday, I'll just say, next week Saturday would be the hottest of a pool bill, which is jolly jazz. And then Sunday would be the Tommy James Trio.
Tommy James is probably the best jazz pianist on the West Coast. And he also is the director of the New Gellings and Band in New York, still. Anyway, thanks for allowing us to speak.
You're welcome. Thanks for joining us. So the meeting of the Kuleo Kalani K Neighborhood Board is has now ended.